Have a meeting called order.
We all please stand, we'll do the pledge of allegiance and a small prayer starting from me. Uh Jimmy, like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, please shine your grace upon us, help us to make good and wise decisions, help to keep our meeting peaceful and cordial and please protect us as we all travel home. In your name we pray, amen. I'd like to welcome everybody here to the Wells County Council Meeting Wednesday, May 8th, 2019. Uh first thing we have on the agenda is the minutes. I assume everybody received their minutes electronically? Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes presented? If not, do we have a motion to accept the minutes presented?
Shall we?
Have a motion, have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. opposed, motion carries. Alright, the next thing we have is transfers. Um I assume everybody received their transfers? We have transfers from Community Corrections, Grant Two. It appears that, uh, the way I read the explanation, that it's just a cleanup. They're coming to the end of their year in June, right? So they're just cleaning up some line items that were in the zero balance areas, so. Any questions or anybody have any concerns with what they've seen in the transfers? I guess if not, do we have a motion to accept transfers as presented?
Shall we?
Motion?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same, motion carries there, seven hours. Alright, next thing is additional appropriations. We have several there. I don't know if you want to take these individually, are you? I see a couple I have a few questions about, but I, let's just do that, let's take you through them individually.
There's a lot here.
Yeah, we've got the clerks' record, or records perpetuation, which is a computer maintenance from the clerk's office and, uh, I didn't see anything in that one. This is a, through the perpetuation fund to continue the court work. And anybody else see anything, any questions?
No.
I guess if not, do we have a motion to accept that clerk's report of records perpetuation?
Shall we move?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same, motion carries. Now we have Community Correction Project Income and, uh, Lisa, it's for $4,000, part-time clerical. Uh, I was, I was kind of curious of the 4,000, are we out or where, you know, where we're going here with?
Yeah, they're just taking money from the fund and putting it up in the line item so that they have more money to spend.
Cause it gets a little confusing, there's a lot of moving parts there and I didn't know where that was, if we've...
I think he had an indication that they had a typo, was that on some...
That's the next one, that's the next one coming, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So basically, we've done some transfers, is that what you were saying earlier? So that, did we take it out of that fund, transfer it out?
No, we took it into, into.
From CMT, okay. So one way or another, we're short in that fund to continue. And again, this gets confusing too because it goes on a calendar year like we do, right? But the grants only, it follows the state June calendar year.
This grant is, is that annual, community project income, is that an annual grant? Yeah.
Cause Blake's not here, so that's why...
It's fees, it's fees.
Fees, okay. Um, cause Blake's not here to explain it to us exactly where we're at with it, um...
He wasn't able to make it tonight? I know normally with, hey, individuals, we like to have the department head answer questions. Leaves a little big tonight work, so.
Do other council members have questions in regards to this or who would like to ask Blake or?
We could table it till next meeting.
Does that sound like a good, okay, let's do that.
I'm in motion to table it till the next meeting.
Second? We have a motion, we have a second for the discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand? Alright, motion carries. So we will table that to our next meeting. Now the next one also comes from, uh, Community Corrections, which is misdemeanor field officer two. And the indication was there was a typo in that from their original budget. So it was a budget difference of, what, $15,400? So it showed that they had in their line items $1,703. So to make it, to come to $17,103, we need, they need $15,400 more to make that work.
It seems odd that it didn't get talked anywhere along the way.
Yeah.
I know he looked at those budgets pretty closely on, as far as their personnel and wages, so. Again, a little disappointed that he's not here to capture that one as well.
I'm curious to how that line item's been paid up to this point.
Right.
You know, with that, with the being, have they, it had to be more than $1,703.
We get the same amount in the misdemeanor every year.
Okay.
And they budget the same amount every year.
Okay. But to pay that out in that line item, they surely would've went through $1,703 by now for a field officer, wouldn't they?
Oh, yes.
So they're in the negative.
So they're in the negative right now, okay.
I would assume that the clerical oversight was on their part and not?
Yes, it was in their budget forms.
Both of these are, both of these are, is that correct?
They just didn't budget enough on the project income.
Yeah, but I mean, in this misdemeanor though, that was there, there also in that. Um, what do you guys want to do? And again, they're in the negative right now, is that account can't be paid for sooner or later, right?
Right, right, it needs to be taken care of before the end of the year, definitely.
Yeah, but I'm talking about, can it go another month? Can we get Blake in here to go through this and do both of them? Okay.
I think in the past, we've had additional, that we always had the department head here.
Yeah. Well, do we have a motion to go ahead and table this also, this additional program?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor, signify by raising your hand? Opposed, same, motion carries there. So we'll have two of them. Steve, yeah, Steve, yeah. So we'll have two of them coming back for a part-time clerical and field officer two, so. Alright, the next one is Loewit, Special Distribution, the consulting fees. I, I just had a question in there in regards to the south corridor, does it still have a balance?
It still has a few bills coming in, correct.
Okay, so it's not over, it's not over, okay, it just hasn't, the billing process hasn't gone, okay. Cause that'll pretty much clean out that account, won't it?
No.
This one's, oh, okay, there'll still be some balance there, okay. Does anybody else have any questions in regards to the $175,720 for consulting fees?
As this relates to the engineering for actually, the south and ultimately the north, wouldn't it?
In the north, the north's included in too, so.
Which we've already authored.
Yeah, we've already approved that, so it's, it's just covering the funds for it, so. Any other questions? Do we have a motion to accept that additional appropriation?
I'll make a motion to accept the additional appropriation.
Second.
We have a second? Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand? Motion carries. Alright, our last one is the PHP Emergency Response and this is a formality. Well, Lisa, if you'd like to explain that.
It was an additional appropriation that was approved in November of 2018 to fund 8113, which was also retired at the end of 2018, so it just needs to be re-appropriated into 8117.
So it's basically a formality that carryover from here. Any further questions in regards to PHP Emergency Response? Yes, we don't, do we have a motion to accept that additional appropriation? Shall we?
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your hand? Opposed, same, motion carries there. Alright, so we just have two of them then to deal with at the next, next meeting. That takes care of additional appropriations. Uh, next we have Scott, if you'd like to step forward.
Sure.
You guys learned that ending's up before the end, I'll get it down pat in the next four years.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We, uh, handed out numbers there for the month of April. Uh, most things are up a little bit. Been pretty active as far as, uh, the areas that we track. Obviously our meals served, like, just got those today. So those are handwritten there in the bottom, those are definitely up, but a lot of that has to do with the increased population of the jails, so obviously more inmates, more, more meals served. Everything else seems to be kind of right by us where we are as far as the funding. We'll give you a chance to look that over, if you've got any questions, you can, you can ask me that. Right now, we have 108 inmates, uh, in jail as of today. Of those 108, 11 are DOC, nine of those are F6s. So, a couple of things just on the plate, I think at the last meeting I mentioned to you guys about a new program we were doing, our kitchen and, uh, program, we're in our fourth week of that, it's been pretty successful so far. The transition is, been taking place very well and, and pretty seamless, no major issues or complaints from what we're doing there, so. They're definitely still eating the food, so.
Good, that's doing good.
So, um, also I brought up too, that our medical, I have increased our medical contracted hours from 16 to 24 per week just due to the demand on the medical issues with, within the jail for the inmates and that has seemed to alleviate a lot of the pressure that, uh, we had with that increased, uh, demand. Some due to the increased population, but also just, uh, for the issues we were dealing with. So again, that was covered within my current budget. And I think that as long as, uh, things stay status quo, that I'll be able to assume that cost, uh, within my budget as well, so hopefully. I don't want to be anything there. Couple of things that are on the plate, we, over the last two or three years, uh, we, we have five boilers within the facility and we've replaced one a year. Uh, we have two left. By, by doing that, we're using, uh, funding that we already have, so again, that's something that we don't have to spend any money on, but, uh, as soon as we get that scheduled, uh, with the company that's doing that, those will be, the last two boilers will be replaced. And then also, I'm sure you're aware, but we have a helipad at the, at the jail that is u, is used very, not a lot, but when it is needed, it is there and it's one of the two places that a helicopter can land. Um, over the years and the weather and everything else, aren't the lights that light up that helipad are, are, uh, pretty destroyed between snow and ice. So again, that's funding, uh, that, I'll assume that cost as well, but we're gonna be replacing those. We already have more to this, just a matter of waiting for the ground to dry out so we can do a little work on that and get that going. Our newest deputy Nick Conrad will be going to the academy at the end of this month, so we got, we, we have him. He's been several months of, uh, field training, uh, currently, so he'll be shipping out to the academy here, uh, at the end of the month, so, uh, looking forward to getting him down there as well. And, uh, we also will be having an opening for a deputy, we have a deputy that's moving on to a different career, so. We just notified of that not too long ago and we're making plans to open up a process again for, uh, to replace that person, so. Other than that, things are going well and...
Good.
Just trying to keep up with the number of inmates that are out there. I mean, obviously that's over capacity still, but, uh, 14 over capacity. We were down to about 102 beginning of the week and back up a little bit, but, so. We were up in the 115, 16 range, but, uh, we had a lot that were sentenced in DOC coming to pick them up, so it's kind of alleviated a little bit of pressure off of what we're doing, so.
Scott, is, um, our next meeting, will that job already be posted for the new deputy?
Yeah, it'll probably be posted by the end of the week, so.
Do you mind just filling us in next meeting with the new pay matrix if you get more applicants or if you see better quality, just see how that's working out so far with you and new people are coming on the work?
Well, we've hired three since that has been approved and...
That many are, okay.
Yeah, I mean, well, two we hired last year, but they already knew through the budget hearing that it was approved, so. But technically, uh, and, I mean, we couldn't be more proud of the last three people that we've hired, they've been quality applicants. Two of those were laterals and one of them, obviously, were sent to the academy at the end of the month, so.
Excellent.
Um, yeah, very, very well received, uh, for sure, so.
Okay, great.
Hey, I haven't kept up with the state legislature there at the end, did anything happen with the increase on, on DOC?
For DM?
Yeah, did they ever?
They gave us $2.50.
Oh, really? Okay. So the $55 didn't work out too well for us?
A lot of other things got approved and there's a big surplus apparently in the state.
Yeah, okay.
So, not for the jail, so the $35 a day that we get is now $37.50.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, so, the sheriffs across the state obviously are, um, not happy with that for sure and what we have to do with the F6s as well, so, um, there's a lot of discussion, a lot of push from the sheriff's association to, to try and seek other avenues, but obviously, with it being a budget cycle and, so we're gonna have to wait a little while, so. But, we've, we've been at that for 30 years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we'll see, yeah, yeah. Here we go.
We'll see how that continues.
Any, any further questions for Scott? Alright, thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Next we have is General Obligation Bond Request, Sarah McNeil, hope I pronounced that right. If you'd like to move forward with whomever you need here, but...
So the PowerPoint is working, can you hear me? I do have what we didn't need to come to other talk, though. Can you hear me okay?
I, it's a little, is it on?
It is, hold on, two. Hold on, two.
Is it on? Oh, it's shoot.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Is that better? Can you guys hear?
Alright, so, um, the library's bond is up in 2020, the one that we currently have, and so we have had some projects that have built over the last, um, 15 years of that bond that we would like to rebond, um, to do those projects. Um, if you would turn to page five, first we'll talk about, um, the idea of place attachment, so, and how the library can be a part of place attachment in our community and how this project is going to do that. So in 2008, the Knight Foundation and Gallup launched, um, the Soul of the Community Project to discover what drives people to a city and why they want to stay in a city. And it wasn't, um, jobs, economics and safety, the three things were social offerings, so places for people to meet each other, feeling that people, um, in the community care openness, how welcoming we are, and then the aesthetic, so the physical beauty of the community, including, um, availability of parks, green spaces and places to meet. So we really feel like the library meets all three of those to kind of help with the revitalization that's going on with left and in place attachment. So we asked our public, um, what exactly do you want our building and what do you want the library to be? Um, we asked as far as services as well, but, um, for the bond, we're gonna focus on the physical. So, we have quite a few teams that come to our library after hours, after school, and, um, they're running out of space there, we have noise issues, um, nursing rooms with sinks and changing table, more study rooms, currently we have, uh, two study rooms that seat three to four people and a lot of businesses would like to use this for meetings, people working from home that just need to get out of the office. So we would like to add four study rooms that seat eight to 10 people. Um, a public restroom upstairs, that was, um, a slight oversight when they built the addition on that people in the genealogy room don't have access to a public restroom upstairs. And more friendly furniture and updated, that's what we heard a lot, updated furniture, furniture I can plug my device and everybody has a device, we need more outlets. Um, we knew that our metal roof needs restored, not replaced, just restored, um, so it can last us through to the next bond. Um, we would like to do LED lights throughout the building, help with lighting, make it more comforting for the patrons, but also at the same time, cut costs. And then, um, an emergency exit in the children's room, we currently don't have an emergency exit in our children's room, so unfortunately, if something would happen, they have to actually be led out into the main part of the library and then back through another space to get out. So, those were some of the physical needs that our public really wanted us to focus on. So we looked at our existing conditions and then for you guys, that's pages 10 and 11. So the areas that are red are things like stairwells and elevator kitchens, um, server room, very expensive things to move, so we knew that we weren't going to touch those items, um, in the downstairs and the upstairs. And then if you turn to, um, 12 and 13, we started talking about what areas in our library play well together. Obviously, we're not gonna put our teen area next to our genealogy, um, since genealogy tends to be more quiet and teens like to have fun when they're in the library, which we encourage. So, um, we came up with the idea that the upstairs will become more of a quiet learning lab environment, so we'll move our nonfiction upstairs, increase our study rooms, genealogy will stay upstairs along with our adult computers. We currently have a storage room upstairs that is underutilized, um, so we'll move into that and, um, it's the best view in the building, so we'll allow the public to now actually sit and enjoy that view by increasing that. And then downstairs, our children's room will increase, our teen space will increase, and our entrance into our meeting rooms will be, um, an easier access for our meeting rooms and staff. And they'll also have, have an, a lounge where adults can sit with newspapers and magazines.
Sarah, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
That upstairs is open to the view of the downstairs?
Yes.
Right, but if the upstairs is quiet, how, what's the noise?
Glass.
This is gonna be a glass condition.
Yes, and then we'll have, um, sound dampening panels all along the ceiling in that, that area where it goes up to the second floor, that why, the ceiling that goes all the way up.
Okay.
Um, so, if you now turn to 15 is the downstairs for the proposed plan and then 32, 32 is the upstairs for the proposed plan. Um, this gives us just a bit more detail, our admin will now be downstairs. Um, as you can see, the children's room, that wall goes away and they now have more space for STEM and discovery type exploration. Um, currently, if we have storytimes going on with a craft, we can also have passive programming with, um, science and art discovery. And then, um, if you go to page 32, that gives you an idea what the upstairs will look like. So we have added, um, three study rooms that can have six people and then we have two study rooms that will do three to four. And then what our boardroom is, the rectangular space there in the middle, can now be rented as a study room or meeting space for people and it can be up to 12 people in that space comfortably, so.
Is that the elevator by the stairwell?
It is, yeah. That's one of the red boxes that we unfortunately can't move. We're not gonna do a whole lot outside, if you guys turn to page 34 and 35. Um, just some minor things that we think will just help with the appeal of people using the outside. We have a lot of people that park in our parking lot to use our wireless, it's on 24/7. Um, and so we would like to, uh, change the entrance way, provide better light in our entrance way. Right now, it's kind of dark, sometimes you're not really sure when the library is open because you can't see the lights in the entrance way. And then add benches along the outside of the perimeter of the library, that each bench has a charging station next to it. So when people are sitting there with their devices, they can charge their devices, use their wireless at any time. Uh, a lot of times during street fear, people are just sitting along the sidewalk, so we thought it would be nice to actually provide them something to sit on. Do you have any questions so far? And we'll move into financials.
Is there an exit for the upstairs or is the stairway?
There is, um, the stairway, there would be a stairway behind, in the very far corner of the study rooms, where those two new study rooms are, on the other side of the boardroom by the bathroom. That's an emergency exit that goes down into our west side of the parking lot. And then the, the stairwell that's there now will remain, so that will be the egress for the third floor. And then the, um, stairs and then the platform seating next to it will be, um, exit as well.
I can't believe there was no exits, so.
In the children's room, yeah. Things have changed in 15 years, unfortunately.
On average, how many kids come to the library in a week?
Oh. We typically have, I would think, five storytimes in a week with a cap at 12 to 15 kids in each storytime and that's just storytime alone. A lot of parents will bring their kids in just to get out of the house or check out books and, so, I would think hundreds. We do a question of the week with the teens, um, where if they use a, they use the index and they have to find the answer and then they get food and we typically have around 30 to 40 just teens do that a week. So, and not all of them are able to, to do question of the week, but, and that's just our teens.
Are you running out of study rooms now, is that part of the problem?
Right, and the size. Right now, they can only, they can only seat about three to four people.
Okay.
And we only have two of them. Um, so a lot of times they're full and then people are trying to sit and the tables and chairs that run down that main opening, which is the loudest part of the building.
Okay.
Um, and then we get complaints about noise and, so, that was a, a big one, people kept requesting more study rooms, larger study rooms.
More practice, okay.
Any other questions? If you flip to the back page, um, we'll go over financials.
Good evening, I'm Brett Habager, I'm a Baker Tilly, um, working on behalf of the library as our municipal advisor. In front of you, you should have a, a chart. And on that chart, you'll see gray lines and blue lines. First thing I want to point out is that the gray lines represent the library's current debt, um, which are the general obligation bonds of 2005, and the blue lines are going to represent the proposed issuance of the general obligation bond in 2019. These are the bonds that are going to be proposed and they're the library's debt. Up in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see that the library is asking for $4.1 million, repaid over a term of 17 years, um, up to 20 years. And what the library is planning on doing is they're planning on keeping their debt service level over those 17 years.
Level to what it is today?
Level to what it is today, so level with the 2005 general obligation.
So it's revenue neutral then, basically? Is that what?
Yes, so what you're going to see is that there will be zero impact on the tax rate, the debt service tax rate.
Because, but what was the bond originally in 2005? I'm still trying to...
The gray lines, uh...
What was the to, that total bond, was there one, just one bond issued at that time?
There was one bond issued.
Was that when the expansion took place, when they added on to the west, I believe, of, of the library? Do you know what that total, what that dollar amount was? Three and a half million? Okay.
It was there. But as you'll see, those bonds, um, are going to ensure in 2020. So the library is planning on issuing debt, um, in 2019, beginning on repaying those in 2020 and keeping debt service level. Now, there's one caveat here, you'll see in 2020, the blue line increases above the gray. What you'll notice here is that the red line, which is representing the tax rate, and the green line, which is representing the, um, cash balance of the debt service fund, as the tax rate stays level, the green line is going to drop because the library is anticipating to spend money out of their debt service fund in order to pay for that first payment in 2020. Uh, and they're doing that in order to keep the tax rate neutral, um, with current levels of debt.
So, in theory, you're keeping the rate the same, but because of assessed value, that you're going after 4.1 versus where we were at 3.5.
Correct, and also the length of the term of the bonds. I'm not sure how long the last bonds were issued for, but they may not have been issued for quite as long. So, the length of the bond can also...
This is a 20-year?
Up to 20 years. We're looking at 17 years and one month right here. And we've got 1% additional cushion built into our interest rates here based off of current market interest rates. So, it may allow us, once we go to market and we see what the appetite for the bonds are, it may allow us to shorten the bonds a year or so based on keeping that level of debt service.
Whatever that annual payment you're looking for.
Yeah, but the plan is to keep in line with that current level of debt service so they can keep their tax rate the same moving forward, holding that assessed value equal. I think that's all I have for you this evening. If there's any questions?
I guess I'm just trying to figure out if we're remaining neutral, I guess is what I mean, you know, as you start moving through the numbers here, where are we going here?
So, the red line is the debt service tax rate. That is based off of a levy that they're budgeting, and based on today's net assessed value, that is going to remain the same moving forward. So, the library will be able to levy the same amount, have the same debt service tax rate moving forward with the issuance of these bonds.
Okay. If assessed value decreases, though, then that could change that rate. Am I correct there?
There could be a little bit of a change in the rate based on assessed value.
That's the guess of the future, yeah.
Yeah, that's the risk of decreasing assessed value, although it also works in the other direction where if there's development and the assessed value increase, the library will then have the option to decrease the tax rate as well.
Any other questions from councilors? One of the, I do have one question, and maybe I'm jumping ahead here, but as far as the process, obviously, as council, you have your own boards, you have, you know, your own tax rate. Assuming that if everything goes forward here from our standpoint, you will handle all the public hearings, is that correct? And the whole, the rest of the procedure of it. We're basically just looking for the whole umbrella of the county of the tax here that would be required.
We will have an additional appropriation because of, not an appropriation of levy, but because that blue bar going above spinning down our balance. We just need your approval to spend our money. That would be...
You would have to come back to us to be able to do that?
...budget for August.
That amount is what?
This 250-some thousand, is that what we're asking?
Yeah. That amount is it? The blue bar would be an additional...
I'm looking at the red bar. Total straight debt service rate.
It's an additional $181,000.
And then any difference between the balance of our VNI and the amount we would pay with our loan for a rainy day?
That's for 2020 you're talking about, okay.
So, your tax rate would stay the same?
Yeah. You're going to use your cash to make the difference.
Cash on hand of the library. What course of action are you looking for us to take tonight?
We have a month built in if you want to, we have the resolution made, so if you want to vote tonight, you can, or if you want to table it and vote in June, we have that already built into our schedule.
How does that coincide with your public hearing that you have to have?
That's far, no, we built in the, we would vote in June.
Oh, okay.
So, it's not going to affect it.
Okay. So, you don't need to press to vote on it tonight?
Not if you don't want to.
I personally like to gather some feedback from others on the topic as far as county debt, whether it's, you know, it's still taxpayer money that's allocated for this project. And I know that from my point of view, we're looking at some other things that are out there to deal with as well. And as I said, I think it's not an unpractical expectation for us to look at what all things will become in the world, so I'm in favor of tabling it at this point, or I'd make that motion at this point, so.
I've been involved with this since last summer, and I'm fine with it, but if we want to wait another month, I'm good with that, too. I feel very comfortable with it.
Wait until after the public hearing, seems like if we're going to vote and approve it, then what's the public hearing?
Well, we have to do that first. We have to do that first. Yeah, that gives them the authority to move forward with their process, yeah. Jim, what do you think? Table for a month, or?
I guess we can wait and see.
If you're not in a real big hurry, I would have no problem just for another month, just to give a chance to make sure I can kind of see.
Build in, had that in mind initially, I believe, so it'll allow us to hear from the public as well, sure, next month.
I think that they feel important about that. I have had comments made to me already. So, I think that, given that you came today, and they will have the option, they can see it in the paper, or you came and give us some other feedback, that'd be great.
I guess we have a motion to table it. Do we have a second?
I'll say that.
All in favor, signify by raising your hand. So, we'll just table for a month, and we'll work on that in June.
Thanks for the thorough...
Thank you very much. Very thorough, very good. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have on the agenda is Brian Colton from the Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors in regards to some financial information for a possible new highway garage in the future. Good evening.
Thank you.
So, you guys are the same company then, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Y'all people we talked about, and they're doing a different company.
Okay. Now, this was the old Umball, is that right originally?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been, it's changed and evolved, a different...
So, if you look down here, you'll see, so it's Baker Tilly, it's aligned with Springsteen and Umball.
Okay.
So, it's officially a mouthful.
Okay, gotcha.
Eventually, it'll just be Baker Tilly, but...
Part of the process.
For like nine months, yeah, very... So, I'll probably refer to myself as Baker Tilly or Umball at some point in time.
We got you.
So, it's all the same people. And then Springsteen is a company out of Minnesota.
Yeah, okay.
Who does the same stuff that we do, just Minnesota, Wisconsin, Iowa.
Okay.
So, who bought who?
Well, going with Baker Tilly.
Well, normally, the buyers usually raises rates to pay for the last purchase.
Yeah, we bought them, and we let them keep the name. I don't think that's quite true. So, just a real quick sidebar on that. So, Baker Tilly has been wanting to get into the municipal advisory kind of business, adding to their consulting wing, trying to diversify more from tax and audit. And so, they had established the Baker Tilly Municipal Advisory LLC, but didn't have anybody in it, because it's not really something you go out and hang a shingle out and then start the business.
Sure.
And then we were looking for, you know, capital, things like that, for expansion in other places as well, and met with each other, and it's a pretty good fit, sort of culture and everything, so we're excited about it. But for people in Indiana, it's the same thing, just a different name now to get used So, what I have, what we have in front of you is a handout that touches on a number of things. Part of it is the highway facility. And then also, when I talked to Lisa, I thought about also talking about a couple other things that we offer that you may want to think about from a county perspective, that we do in other places, that just helps them look at their finances, helps them with kind of looking at their capital that's coming down the road. And then the last half of the presentation really will focus on the, kind of, a couple options for funding of that highway garage. So, we already skipped through a couple. So, really, we're going to start with kind of the comprehensive financial planning, as I label it, which is kind of more of the general county financial level, segues into some of the capital planning aspect, and then we'll end up, as I said, with the highway garage at the end. So, on page three, just talking a little bit about what is, when I say comprehensive financial planning, you know, why are we doing these? This really came out of when the tax caps were put in place. So, that's not a huge impact in Wells County. You're lucky in that regard. Other places we go, and it's 20%, so every time they, if they were to put a bond in place, you know, a dollar, if they put, you know, a dollar of debt, 20% of that goes away because of the circuit breakers, they have to fill it with something else. So, it's an issue in a lot of places. So, this really came out of that, where we're trying to help some of our clients figure out, what are we going to do? As they look at their revenues, and it's going down precipitously. But then what we found with that is actually a helpful tool, even if you are in financially, you know, good position now. We've had some places where they're fine now, but then if you look three, four, or five years out, healthcare costs, there's other types of costs going up, that it kind of opens their eyes and gives them a chance to prepare for that. So, really, what we look at is, you know, it comes from the fact that we look at your cash reserves, you know, look at the revenues, and then as we go forward, we'll talk through, really looking at how we do it, I guess I should say, on page four, is we look at the last two years, and then we project that out three to five years. A lot of the ones, I have an example I can kind of pass around that has four years out into the future, it's really that kind of three to five-year range. Just that really builds on the historical aspect, but it also builds in if, you know, there's things that are changing. If you have a new revenue source coming online, not necessarily the case here, but we've had places where they're putting an income tax in place, or they're putting a public safety income tax in place, you have that. So, if it was something new, you know, we'd put that into that model as well. But it really goes through and it tries to show, this is where you're at, these are some of your weaknesses, this is where you might have strengths. It also adds into that, we like to put information in there as far as, you know, what are fund balances that you should have? Where do those need to be at if you're talking to rating agencies, which that flows into our last part that we'll talk about here at the end? So, it really just kind of helps to provide a plan that you can look at, really looking at on an annual basis. And if there's any gaps in your financing, if you have, we see, one of the common places where we see problems is like health funds, you know, we'll see that where that has a gap in it that sometimes needs to be addressed. You know, we see general funds in some places because of the circuit breaker can be an issue. So, it helps with that. It also helps that, you know, you do the public safety income tax, but, you know, is there ways that you can shift things around into that? I know that last year, when I just kind of glanced, that last year spent down most of that, you know, is that a one-time thing? Is that... So, there's just a lot of different pieces go into that, into that comprehensive financial plan, though I think it's a very useful tool. And then the other item, if you want to kind of dive deeper into the capital side, is a capital plan that we also offer, and this is also important for rating agencies when they're looking, because what they're looking at when they're rating bonds or a number of things, they look at, you know, what kind of management do you have? What do you, how do you look into the future? Are you just looking one year out, and then you get through that year, then you take a look at the next year, hope everything's okay, and go to the next year, or do you do some planning? And that does help with the ratings if you're doing planning. And a large portion of that is capital. You know, so that could be your bridges, it's your roads, it's your highway equipment, the various items like the sheriff talked about with boilers and things like that. Putting that all into one document, basically, it's probably, you know, you have pockets, a lot of times we'll see, oh, this person has information on the bridges, this person knows about the trucks. None of it looks the same, but they kind of know pieces of it, but not really one central location that says, this is all the stuff that we have coming online in 2020 and 2021. You know, it starts to show, is there going to be kind of a blip somewhere down the road that you have to really plan for? So, it really puts it into one spot, helps you prioritize across the different, you know, departments, so you're not just looking at, this is my department. So, I really think it'd help you guys, you gals, with looking at that and being able to prioritize across everything, so it's not just during the budget season and you need to have this one-time capital expense that helps you plan out, well, we know that in 2022, we're going to have these costs. And so, it's really, I think, another helpful kind of planning tool that allows you to prioritize through that. So, on page six, it just talks briefly about how that process works, so it's really helping to develop policies. You know, when do you replace, what's the rules for that? How do you do that with matching enough to the life of that particular asset? You know, sometimes capital lines need to be replaced because they're, they really need to be replaced sometimes if they want to be replaced. So, this helps to prioritize those things. So, if there really is something that has to be replaced, that has probably a little bit different rating to it than if it's, if we have the money, let's replace this. So, it really kind of helps you have a central location to look at that. And then, you know, affordability, what can you, what can you spend money on a given year? Maybe you don't have enough money in '21 to spend it, so you have to push it to the next year, the year that you have money. So, it helps that, helps organize some of those thoughts. So, in the end, these both basically are a couple of different plans. Financial plan, you know, lays out financial health of all the different funds that we would look at. We don't typically look at all the funds. You pick some of the major funds, you look at maybe eight to 15 different funds, depending upon, you know, the different fund makeup that the county has. Looks at that, projects each of those out, they have graphs and things like that as well to kind of show that, and talks through the different assumptions. And we work with the department heads, we work with you as far as what are the assumptions that we need to build into some of the numbers to make it, you know, a viable document. To use the same assumptions, county to county, city to city is worthless, unless you kind of have what's the local, you know, what's happening locally, and you guys know, you know, some of the costs and things like that better than the county, county over, two counties away. The capital plan is similar. It'd have the different needs, projects, shows how to finance them, shows the timing for each of those. And it's really helpful when you incorporate into the budget process, so it's that living, breathing document. And the worst thing is to do is to go through, do this, set it on a shelf, never look at it. You know, that's a waste of time, I don't think you get any value out of that. So, it's looking at it, updating it annually or every couple of years, just to keep it fresh. Like I said, it is a living, breathing document, it's the best way to look at it. And then on page eight, just monitoring those results. You know, is it really doing what you wanted it to do? Are the funds doing what you thought they would do? Have you moved things around? You changed allocations of your levy perhaps? If you made some changes to projects, is that meeting the goals that you had in place? Some of that's going to happen over time. You know, that's where if you look at it over time, did that meet your goals that you had for your capital funds? And then also, as you know, there's changes in technology that could impact it, state funding, federal funding. You know, sometimes there's federal funding that comes up for a very short period of time, or state funding also for specific types of projects that could alter how you plan to do your capital expenditures, and that needs to be built in. And then the very last one, you know, citizens may have differences of opinion as to what priorities are as well. Something could rise up or be the next hot thing. And then a couple of benefits, just to hit on this, then we will get into the highway project. As I mentioned, it really helps on the management side when we go talk to standard employers or Moody's about a bond rating. They like to see, while you're actually planning ahead, do you have, also in addition to these, you know, do you have a debt policy? Do you have a reserve policy? You know, those are all different things that we could, we could help with as well throughout the process, so that when we go have those conversations, you're in a very good position, and you get the highest rating you can get. But they really do like to see this type of information, and I think it's also beneficial for you guys. You know, you're showing that you're being proactive instead of reactive, you're planning for these costs as opposed to, well, we have to go out and do this, or we have to do that. So, I think that's also a positive way to look at it when you're kind of the steward for the public's money as well. And it helps you to prioritize your projects, as I mentioned. So, I think that really kind of, those are just a couple of things, and we could talk more about those, and I'll show you an example here at the end, just so you can kind of see what the documents are. The last half of the presentation really has to do with the highway garage. And there are a limited number of ways to fund things. We are limited. The two most common would be property taxes and income taxes. Some places, a property tax would be a new tax levy, that's what we've assumed here, it's a new rate, you're not taking... it's a new rate, you're not taking general fund dollars. If we had a CCD fund, not taking CCD dollars. Some places, we've had tax increment fund different types of projects. And then the other option really is kind of local income taxes. Those are, so income taxes and property taxes are really the two most common ways to go about this project. So just kind of big picture on the property tax side, some of the things that we look at when we're looking at doing the financing is, what kind of debt limit do you have? Let's say you're allowed 2% of your, an NSS valuation, divided by three, is what your debt limit is. So for Wells County, that's not an issue, and we have a schedule that kind of talks about that here in a second. And this is all based upon the assumption of a $5 million bond issue. So that's, that's kind of what these numbers are all predicated upon in here. Whether it's a controlled or non-controlled project, there's different thresholds the state has for whether or not you can do a project without having the ability for there to be a petition or monstrosity process, or a referendum process as well. The amount of money that we're talking about here at 5 million is just below that threshold for the petition or monstrosity, the controlled projects to kick in. That's $5,170,000 right now for 2019, and that goes up every year slightly. So we'll talk through that process here in a second. And then also, just the type of bond issue, is it a general obligation bond or a lease financing? General obligation bond really gets you the highest rating. But as I mentioned, you do have a debt limit. So if you did a $5 million project, that's about half your debt limit, which, you know, we can talk through, is there pros or cons with that? The issue with the lease financing is if you were to lease the actual highway building, you can't start making payments on that until it's actually in use, you can actually use that facility. So typically, you would have what's called capitalized interest. And so during that period of time where you can't make payments, the people that bought the bonds, they like to get paid. And so you have to set aside a portion of your bond proceeds when you sell the bonds to make interest payments. If you do that, you don't have those funds to put back into the project that should build the building. So if it's $100,000 of capitalized interest, that's $100,000 of that $5 million when we sold the bonds, that would be set aside to pay interest. If you did a general obligation bond at the right time of the year, we'll talk about that also, that $100,000, instead of going to capitalized interest, could go to the project. Or the project could, you know, if the project, if it was under that $5 million, it could just be a small bond issue.
Since you were talking about the rating agencies favoring general obligation over the lease, what kind of rate difference do you see for a same project going one way or the other?
It depends, it's some of it on the length, and the timing and things, but it could be 10 to 20 basis points, so it's not huge, but it is, you know, it's real dollars.
200 years or whatever the terms can be significant.
Yeah. So it could add up. You know, and sometimes we'll go out with a general obligation bond and a lease bond, and they get the same, kind of the same rating.
Sure.
Got the same rating, it could get the same rate, so it does kind of, you know, vary, but...
It matters a lot too, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I may be kind of jumping ahead here, what is the dollar limit for bonding typically? Is there, is there a bottom level to it? Is it two, I mean, were they, it's not worth your time to try to do?
Like to do a bond?
Yeah, is there a point, is there a point there of?
I mean, we've, we've done bonds of $300,000.
Oh, really? Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say...
The percentage of the cost of issuance.
Yeah, it would...
I mean, it's...
Is there a happy medium?
I would not recommend, I would not recommend.
I understand, is there a happy medium point of where it crosses that?
I mean, it really kind of depends. You know, for, you know, for one unit, a million dollars would be a huge bond issue. You know, that 300,000, that was your debt limit.
Yeah.
So in that particular community, you know, that, that was a huge deal for them, for a small facility. You know, we see a lot of bonds that we work on are really in kind of that million to $5 million range, and we'll do 10, 20, $80 million bonds.
Okay. Like I said, I didn't know if there was a point where you could...
For a county doing a $300,000 bond issue, that, that would, we would try to help you find a way. I mean, we'll do, we'll do, if you want to do it, we're here to help, but...
Sure.
I think there's better ways than, like with the comprehensive financial plan, we'd flush out a way for, pay for a $300,000 county project.
That's fine.
Yeah. And then local income taxes, the other option, the rates are pretty similar on income tax and property tax bonds. There could be some shift on that as well, kind of in that same 10 to 15 basis points. But we have some very strong income tax rated debt in the state, and it's very well recognized. The things to look at with that are, you know, what are you currently using those funds for? Because you can't increase, you could increase the income tax, but this is assuming you don't increase the income tax. You know, if it's already all being used for projects, we can't, can't spend it twice unless you want to take it from this and now put it towards this bond issue. So, you know, that, that would be what you really need to look at. And then also, you know, you'd be obligating it for 20 years, 15 years, 10 years, and so you'd have to really, you know, do we want to set aside half of 40%, 35% of our income taxes for this bond for that length of time? So those are items to consider. What we do, you know, have done a number of income tax-based bonds as well. The biggest factor there is when we look at kind of the coverage aspect of it, for every dollar of debt service, how much revenue do you have to pay that? That's what the rating agencies, the people buying the bonds are going to want to look at. And, and when we get to that, I have a slide in here, I, I just looked at the, what used to be the edit income tax, so the edit portion of your lit, as a security for it. I think that could be broader, but that's a pretty common piece to pull out, so we can kind of touch on that. So on page 11, and this is a pretty high level, just, you know, how does the process work? And I, and I picked the general obligation bond process. If this was a lease financing, instead of three to four months, you're probably talking, could be five to six months, we can do, we've done GOs in two months. You know, that's when you've done it, you line the meetings up, you might have special meetings, you're just bang, bang, bang. Sometimes you're at the mercy also of papers, and when they publish them, and you have to get notices, and you know how that, how that is after meetings and things. So we just kind of, three to four months, that's pretty comfortable, once you decide, okay, we're going to go this route. Now, you could be working on some of the bonding process while you're also going through the process of getting bids and things like that, so there could be some overlap in that timing. So you don't have to go through, get the bids for the project, and then start the bond process. You really want to be going down the same path, marry it up, you're in position, we've got everything approved, here's the final cost, go to market. So that's, that's kind of how we would recommend. But so some of the key steps along the way, obviously, the beginning part of it is, what's the scope of the project? Getting it designed, talking about when you're going to bid the project, figuring out, you know, which of the different ways do we want to finance the project? That's very far up front. Early on, you're going to want to adopt reimbursement resolution, and this just simply allows you, if you're, you make some expenditures out of other county funds and you want to reimburse yourself for bond proceeds, this gives you that ability to do so. You can choose to do the bond issue and not reimburse yourself, but this gives you the option. So it's kind of just belt and suspenders approach early on in the process, go ahead, adopt it. You can always choose not to reimburse, but you don't want to be six months down the road and say, I wish we could have reimbursed ourselves for this. So it is to protect yourself. Obviously, early on, you're going to adopt the bond resolution or bond ordinance. And then you really, it's a very streamlined approach when you have the, the 5 million bond issue size. You're going to have additional appropriation hearing to spend the bond proceeds, that's obviously not been approved in the budget. You're going to have to publish a couple notices of determination to have a hearing to issue the bonds, that's a very, you know, straightforward process. And then one of the parts that we get really involved with is the next portion, where it's the official statement preparation, that's the marketing document for the bond issues, we go out to the market. There's a couple of different portions of it, introductory portion of the official statement really is, here's all the security, that's all the gory details of what's the security, how's it going to get paid back? And then there's a general information section, which is all the demographics of the county. Somebody's looking at it, they want to know how diverse is the economy, what's your large taxpayer base look like, what's your assessed value doing, tax rates? It has all that kind of information in it as well for the person buying the bonds. And then the bond rating process, that would happen after we prepare the preliminary official statement. We help with that process, we'll walk you through that. And that's about a three-week process with the, with going to the bond rating agencies and getting the rating back from them, providing a lot of information to them, it's having at least one call with them. Usually we'll have information that they'll want to have, so we'll follow up with them on that. There's a due diligence call, which I didn't put on here, which is relatively new with some of the regulations that are in place. And that's just to make sure that the county has reviewed the documents that are going out. We'll help prepare them, but we need to have somebody at the county sign up and say, yes, the information in here is correct. So that's also something we obviously would walk through with you, us and bond counsel, the attorneys involved. Have the bond sale, typically on a general obligation bond, it would be a competitive bond sale. Send it out to the market. You'd be surprised, some places, people that come in and will have them bid from Pennsylvania and different places, so it's kind of neat when we get, who's that person that, that won a bond sale or something? But typically, it's four or five that are in Indiana, pretty heavy, that would win that. But you have the bond sale and the bond closing. So from the time we send the official statement out to actually the bond closing, that's probably about a five to six week process in and of itself, just when you think about kind of rating agency, about three weeks for them. We get the rating back about two weeks for the marketing of the bonds, sell the bonds in about two weeks till closing. So that's a, you know, that, that right there is a pretty big part of that process. And some of those pieces we can expedite if we had to, but those are kind of the cushions we like to build in on those. And then at the very end, post issuance responsibilities, when you issue the bonds, you're closing the bonds, you're not done. This is your baby for the next 15 to 20 years. And some of it is continuing disclosure, which is annually updating information to the marketplace, a bond this size would probably have that. And that's, when I talk about that demographic section in the official statement, that's a lot of the stuff they want updated. It has financial information, it has your assessed values, tax rates, they're going to want to see that on an annual basis, being updated. And then there's IRS rules as well, arbitrage, it's a tax-exempt bond, did you spend down the proceeds in a, you know, in a certain amount of time to maintain the tax-exempt status? Otherwise, it could become a taxable bond if you don't follow through on that, we don't want that.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's just, we always want to make people aware that, yes, you get that money at bond closing, but there's a lot of things afterwards, and, you know, we help with a lot of that, bond counsel helps with that. You're not alone in that, but there are additional factors down the road. So then a number of slides here have a bunch of different numbers on it, that we'll walk through here real quick for you. The next slide is the debt limit calculations, I referenced this already a little bit. So based upon the county's assessed valuation, it's about $10 million for the debt limit. So the county has plenty of debt limits to do a bond issue like this. A building bond like this, we've seen it done both GO as well as a lease financing, so either scenario really would work. When I mentioned earlier about not having capitalized interest on a general obligation bond, it really depends on the timing for that issuance. If the bond is issued by the end of this year, then you could have a rate next year, or if you issue it by the end of '20, you could have a rate in 2021. If you go out and issue the bonds in, let's say, March of 2020, the soonest you could have a tax rate would be in the May cycle of 2021, which would have a bond payment typically July 1st, July 1st, July 15th. So March to July of the following year, we might be able to have a long coupon, where somebody would not require any interest payments until that point in time. But that's 15 months, that's a long period of time, that's over 15 months actually. So that would likely need to have some capitalized interest in it. So when we think about timing to issue a bond, that's one of the things that, you know, we look at, if it's the last half of the year, you have that, you can have that long coupon.
So you about have to anticipate, you better have one payment cycle ahead of yourself, right? I mean, from what we're just talking about here?
I mean, you kind of want to...
Just to cover yourself, to make sure you're covered, and you're plenty covered on everything.
You want to...
Before your rate kicks in, and if you go to the property tax side.
I mean, you could do it, we do a lot of general obligation or property tax backed bonds in November and December. Because of the timing, you can sit to the end of the year, so you have that least amount of interest.
Sure.
It gets you the money, and then you start doing the, the construction. So that's, that's a time that we see a lot of them. But sometimes, you know, the project needs to be done at a certain time, and you just have to build it into the project. So that's just something to, you know, kind of think about as far as timing of the project. Sometimes you can control that, sometimes you can't, it's just something to be aware of. So then I put together a couple of illustrative debt service examples, I did a 15-year bond and a 20-year bond. You know, those are pretty typical length of bonds, but you could also do a shorter bond or something in between. It could be 17-year bond, 13-year bond, 10-year bond. So 15-year bond, we use 4% for both of the bond issues right now with the yield curve, it's pretty flat. So between a 15 and...
What are you seeing right now out there?
It's pretty flat.
It's real?
Yeah, it'd be probably about three and a half, that we built in a little bit for this. But it's pretty flat. I talked to our, we have a director of pricing, and I talked to him, and it's, it's pretty flat right now, so there really wasn't a difference between the 15 and 20. So with the difference, obviously, this is just like if you had a mortgage that was 15 years versus 20, 15 years, going to pay it off sooner, but you're going to pay for that, you're going to have higher annual payments. We do semi-annual principal payments, that's why you see that calculation, helps to pay down that debt faster, and then we just add those together for your annual payments, so it's about $450,000 per year for a 15-year, and about $365,000 per year for a 20-year Then on the next schedule, we translate that into, what would that tax rate be? And so for a 15-year bond issue, that's about 2.8 cents. For a 15-year bond, for a 20-year bond, it's a little bit less, at 2.29, so you see it's pretty close. But with a county, with a large assessed valuation, you know, that payment, there's not going to be much fluctuation, just given the fact that you have one that has $1 billion of assessed valuation, you know, in those two payments. So it's pretty similar, but, you know, obviously, it's a little bit different. So then, the next slide, people like to know, how does that impact them? So this slide just shows property tax impacts for a few different home prices or values, and then some commercial and ag land. So for example, $100,000 home, assuming that that's, matches with the gross assessed valuation, about $9 for a 15-year bond, that'd be the annual increase in taxes, and about $7.50 for a 20-year bond. And then $121,000 was the median, median home value for Wells County, it's about $13 for the 15-year bond issue, and about $10.50 for a 20-year bond. We did $100,000 of commercial or retail value, so that is assuming there's no type of abatement on, or any type of deduction on it, so that's pretty straightforward. $28 for the 15-year bond, and about $23 for the 20-year bond. And on the ag land, that was assuming, I believe, an acre value of 1560. So 100 acres of agricultural land would be about $44, and the 15-year bond about 35 on the 20-year bond, just to kind of give you a range. And we can run, you know, if you're saying, well, I want to know what it is for $200,000 house, or a 75, we can run all sorts of variations on that that you want to see. And then slide 16 is a slide that just pertains to the, the income tax. So we use the same annual payments, as I mentioned, to be pretty similar, and looked at what the certified edit distribution is with the county unit for this year, and just calculate what the coverage is. And it's just a little bit over 200% on the 15-year bond, and about 260% on the 20-year bond. You know, that's sufficient to sell the bonds. But when I see that, it's somewhat concerning that you're probably using a lot of that. I doubt that you have half your edits sitting around not being used, or even a third of your edits sitting around not being used. So I doubt that an income tax bond is a viable solution. Now, the one thing to point out, you can pledge property taxes to the bond issue, issue Now, the one thing to point out, you can pledge property taxes to the bond issue, issue it as a general obligation bond.
As a backup for.
Well, and as you go through the bond process, you could decide, you know, we've got sixty thousand extra of edit or another revenue source, you can put that towards it and reduce that bond payment coming out of property taxes. It's just saying, if you do a GO bond, the ultimate security of that is we're going to put a tax in place. So that does give you flexibility, you could use other funding sources if you wanted to or down the road. Um, you know, ten years down the road, you get a windfall of some type of revenue source. Uh, you could put that in, bonds that have a call provision in it as well. Um, probably ten years, nine to ten years out. So there is some flexibility on that. So then the final slide, uh, just kind of next steps, you know. Uh, just consider looking at the, the comprehensive financial plan, capital plan perhaps. And then, you know, really starting that process with the highway garage. Early steps, obviously, or what's the design of the cost refinement for that project? What's the choice of security? I think, probably have a pretty good idea on the choice of security, what you're going to need for that. Um, and then I just also mentioned on there, I mentioned it already, but I was going to slide, just for that tax rate, just thinking about timing of when you want something put in place. Because we've had, you know, some people think, well, I can just put it in place in January and it'll hit the May taxes, that does not work that way. Um, DLJF will not allow that to happen, so.
Definitely, definitely.
So they are sticklers for that, that's really cannot bend. Um, so that's kind of the formal presentation. And I can, if you have any questions, I can take questions.
I'm curious, when we talk about the general, uh, total, um, borrowing options, dollar wise, when you talk about the ten million, is that, is that total for the county based upon our assessed value?
That's, that's if you wanted to follow up with your debt limit, you can issue lease bonds that would not count towards that.
But I mean, is it all bonds is where we would be at ten million?
What that ten million represent is, it's the bonds that would count against the county unit's debt limit. So if you did a pure edit bond, that would count against that as well. Uh, property tax bond would count against that. If you do a lease financing of any kind, uh, then that does not count against that. That gets you outside the debt limit for the county. So the county could do, you could do a twenty million dollar bond issue as a lease. That would get you outside of that.
Oh, okay, okay. I mean, I'm not trying to.
That would get you into, well, that'd get you in reprimand, probably shouldn't have sent.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely.
It's like fourteen million dollars.
Sure, sure.
So that would be outside of that.
Yeah, okay.
Brian, can we talk about the cost on a comprehensive financial plan or a capital plan?
Yeah, um, typically we do that on time and expense, but, um, the ballpark is probably about twenty-five to thirty thousand on the comprehensive financial plan. Um, you don't have TIF funds, do you have any? Wells County does not have any, the unit of Wells County does not have any TIFs.
Not the county, not the county.
The city does, often does. Um, you know, so that'd be a component that wouldn't be in there. Uh, you don't have outstanding debt, have a couple of, like little equipment I saw online. So that would probably count out some of that. Um, you don't have as many funds as some counties have, so I think yours would be a little bit more streamlined. The, the example I handed out was a Henry County, that may be similar, although they have, they have redevelopment. So kind of that twenty-five-ish, thirty thousand-ish range.
And that's where the CFP, that does not include a capital plan.
Well, the capital plan, um, that's probably in that twelve to seventeen thousand range. Um, if you did it all at the same time, there'd be some economies of scale because some of that information would be overlapped. And if we're meeting with department heads to talk about, you know, the CFP pieces, we'd be talking to them about the capital piece at the same time. So, you know, there wouldn't be travel back and forth, there wouldn't be multiple meetings. So I think that would be kind of where we would see somebody, that efficiency, if they were done.
Some kind of a maintenance fee going forward after that, they don't, I mean, it's a one-time deal to do this, but.
So then, to, to update it, um, you know, that's probably in that, it depends. If you waited two years to update it, it's basically like redoing it at that point in time. If it's one year, um, that'd probably be more like the twelve to fifteen thousand dollar range. Um, because you're adding in a year as opposed to having to go in and add, now you have to go in and add two years into that. So that would be kind of that, how that would look.
Is there a best practice out there that you see that, that normally would happen for a county? Of course, you're, you're, you're kind of new to this as far as Baker Tilly, right? I mean, as far as.
Well, I'm with Omba, so we've been doing it, we've been doing it with, with Omba, now it just has a new name on it. Um, I mean, the, the one year does allow you to kind of keep, keep up on it, in all honesty. Um, but we've also seen it where, you know, they looked at it at the one year and we kind of talked through it with them and everything kind of matched up to what we thought it was going to be. So they did wait, you know, they've waited two years. Some, you know, do it once and they don't do it again, or they do it five years later and then it's like, um, they probably should have done it sooner than that because things happened in some of those places. I think it's probably the best, just general overall, is take a look at it and then decide. Uh, I had it with the city recently where we sat down, looked at it and things kind of all matched up, so they're going to wait to do it next year.
But as far as bond rating companies, if we've got one done recently, I mean, that's what they would look at.
They like to see, they would love to have it done every year. Um, but, you know, if you're not in the market every year, you know, I wouldn't do it just because of the bond rating aspect of it. I mean, it does help, but I think it's also just a good tool. I mean, they'll give you a rating without it. Um, that just impacts the management, management side, there's, you know, different components to it. Um, they love it when you say, yeah, we update it every year. Well, they're not paying for it every year.
Exactly, exactly.
They have a whole list of things that they would love to have to do all the time.
Is there a way to quantify that, that by going through the process and the bond rating, I would say, the lower the bond rating, the lower the interest rate theory would be? Is that, is that the big advantage to going through and having you do this work? Is that the savings would come in the form of the debt servicing being less?
I think there'd be some trade-off in that. I wouldn't tie it to that. I mean, I, I think even if you weren't doing the bond issue.
Sure.
I mean, I.
There would be other advantages.
I think there's advantages to it as well, but, you know.
Trying to quantify monetarily, right?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, I don't think I could, I, we could put something together, but I, it's, it's, it's one of many factors in it, you know. Yeah, I mean, it's, like I said, it's the other things as well that they'll ask about, is there a reserve policy? Um, do you want to have twenty percent fund balance, things like that? So those are all additional things that as we go through the bond process, um, we probably want to talk to you about implementing some of those. You're far enough away now that you can get some of those things in place. So where you can legitimately look at them in the face and say, we're doing this. As opposed to other places where you start the process and you did it at the last council meeting and you're talking to S and P today, yeah, we're doing it, but we've done it once. So I think those are good policies.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the frank response on my number, so, that was great.
Any other questions for Brian? It's good information, we appreciate you coming and providing this.
So keep in touch with you, however you want to proceed.
I like, I like the charts.
Yeah, that's good.
It's explanatory, you know.
And that doesn't even have the colorful charts. Those are just numbers. Yeah, so that's, that's kind of the estimate, obviously. As it goes forward, it'd be much more refined and all that, but just to kind of give you some stuff to think about.
Brian, do you need the Henry County example back or is there something you can leave?
Uh, I can leave that.
Thank you.
Pass it around. Sounds good?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, buddy. All right, we're two, once we take care of the Haven manufacturing.
Yes.
I was a little confused on that, that came back as a different, yeah, I, I see Chad. If you want to step up, Chad, where's? That came right after our last meeting, that came back through again as, yeah.
I should have had that resolutions along.
Okay, is that, okay.
Yeah, so essentially, um, the, um, process to approve an abatement actually requires in a resolution.
Resolution.
Um, at the time of approval and so.
Is it with them that way? We just, this is first time.
Well, it should always include a resolution.
Okay, gotcha.
Um, because actually what you approve is a resolution.
Gotcha, okay.
It's part of the paperwork. So what I'm not sure is, and we probably should have asked Roy, is essentially you did approve the abatement last month. Essentially, if you could sign the resolution as approved last month.
For showing the approval of what our motion was.
Correct, and if you guys had any issues with the resolution because you essentially didn't see the resolution.
Yeah.
The resolution essentially indicates the abatement just as explained, has the normal ten year scaling process within the abatement. Um, yeah, essentially the process is you approve a resolution that has the, uh, statement of benefits included with it, so.
So it's all the same information?
Nothing has changed, yes. Nothing has changed, it just has the resolution that's supposed to be attached.
Well, why don't we just, can we go ahead and just make a motion for this resolution? That'll, that'll, that put it record, so we got it all.
Do you have a number, a number for the resolution?
Two thousand nineteen oh six.
And, and I would say Seth would probably abstain.
Yeah, because I was not here right at the.
Yeah, you weren't here at the last meeting. Thank you for reminding us. Do we have a motion to accept a resolution, uh, two thousand nineteen oh six?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution twenty nineteen dash oh six.
You have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Can you purr the discussion? If not, all agreeable, raise your hands. Yes, question approves.
Thank you.
Appreciate, thanks.
Thanks.
I guess that resolved that, I was, I thought I was going to give them more detail. All right, any other miscellaneous business? Any other counsel?
I have a question and I'm going to direct it to Lisa. He was talking about capital, basically capital assets. Do we have listings of capital assets and do we list them somewhere if they're over a certain amount? Because like, um, you know, at schools, we have to have that kind of stuff and it was, we made our limit up to five thousand. So anything over five thousand dollars, you had to list through capital projects and you had to, well, they actually audit that pretty heavily. So I didn't know at the county level, if we have those types of lists, yeah.
I have to, yeah, upload it in the, in the report.
Yes, okay.
Kind of like a depreciation sheet, we have everything, the dollar purchase price.
So we do have the listing of the highway departments, trucks and all of the stuff. And if we do a major renovation like the Courthouse Plaza, that will go on and all that stuff, super.
Does it show depreciation? I'm curious, just, I mean, it's not from a tax standpoint, but just from a value standpoint, I don't know.
I have a vendor who.
Handles that, okay.
Oh, you pay somebody to do that? Just smiling.
There we go. Anybody else, anybody? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor, so you can probably raise your hand. We are adjourned.